Beer board meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman McBride, Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann, Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Magnus, and Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated January 22nd, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Any old business before us? Any new business? We have a request from the Pearl at Aspire LLC, Aspire Foundation for a Class C onsite beer permit located at 777 Aspire Drive in Clinton. Anyone here to speak on that? Tom, do you want to say anything? Yes, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't see you.
Please come to the podium, state your name and address. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay.
I should have noticed you had the green on.
I always represent. Amanda Miller. And do you want my personal address or the business address? My personal address is 3750 Davis Ferry Road, Loudon, Tennessee, 37774.
And so you're going to have this as a beer permit for the restaurant?
That's correct.
Okay. Are you getting a liquor license also?
We are.
Have you already gotten that?
We have not. We have to wait on our CO for that.
Okay, so that's why you're here for us today, because usually if you get the beer license or the liquor license, the beer license follows to the state.
Yeah.
So that's why you're asking for that.
Correct.
Any, and I know Joe with all his, the getting goes and stuff, I know his process as far as checking IDs and of course, let you know, we take serving to underage people very seriously.
Absolutely.
First fine will be $1,500, I guarantee you. So I just want to let you know upfront, so.
No, understood. I come from a long history of restaurants, so our processes will be extreme.
Do we have any questions for Amanda?
You got a timeframe on opening? Will it open before or after the actual part?
Will all open at the same time.
Same time.
Any other questions? She didn't answer your question, by the way.
I don't have that answer.
She answered it with a smile.
I could defer.
We're looking forward to the opening. Any other questions? Hear a motion for approval?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman McBride, Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann, Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Magnus, and Mayor Burton.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to adjourn the beer board? Going to open up public hearing. Called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman McBride, Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann, Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Magnus, and Mayor Burton.
Here. Public hearings on two ordinances. If anyone would like to speak on these. Ordinance number 687, this is amending the CMC Title III Municipal Court, adding Chapter 5, including the administrative hearing officer. Does anyone here like to speak on that? Ordinance number 688, this is rezoning B2 to P1, Aspire Park, Yarnell Road at Clinch Avenue. Anyone like to speak on that? Hear a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing's adjourned, regular meeting. Called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman McBride, Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann, Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Magnus, Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of this?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Prayer this evening be given by Vice Mayor Gann. Before we start, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Wally Carmichael, longtime police officer and citizen in town. I know he'll be missed.
Father, we thank thee for the ability to live in a community like Clinton, for people like Wally who serve us, who are with us every day and take care of us. We pray that you would help us as a council and as the citizens of Clinton to make this a better place, to make it one that people strive to live in, and to make this the best place that we can make it on the face of the earth. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated March 25th, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any grievances from the citizens or praises, we'll take both. We just ask for speakers just to give you a three-minute time slot, be appropriate. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Savannah Mead. I live at 146 Garden Road in Norris, but I work at 131 South Charles G. Severs Boulevard, which is ASAP of Anderson. I'm a Franching Coordinator there. Just wanted to let everyone know and invite everyone to an event we're having. May 7th is Fentanyl Awareness Day in Tennessee. In the state of Tennessee, seven people every day die of fentanyl poisoning. And while in Anderson County specifically, our overdose deaths did go down from 91 to 75 in 2022, 53 of those did involve fentanyl. And so we are trying to host an event at the Clinton Public Library to raise awareness for this day and for this substance that is really so incredibly deadly and as oftentimes people don't even know it is within what they are taking. But we are also trying to create kind of a safe space for our older teens and our young adults that are getting targeted by this substance. So at the Clinton Public Library on May 7th at 6:30, we will be there doing a Tennessee Save a Life training. That is the training we provide, that is the recognize the signs of an overdose and how to reverse it, as well as how to administer naloxone. We will also be having trivia, things like that, so a couple of fun prizes, just to create a safe space for teens and young adults to be at, as well as recognizing this day. So we hope to see you all there. You can go to our website ASAPofAnderson.org or our social media if you want to learn more. But yeah, just wanted to let you all know about that day and invite everyone to come. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey JB. Jinx, you want to speak? Can you try to help him with the speak, with the microphone there? Can you get?
I think I'm losing the speaker thing probably.
There you go. State your name and address, please.
Jinx, by St. 275 Yacht Club Lane, Andersonville. And most of what I'm gonna say in my voice is not good as questions or anything else. First, I would like to know what the determination is for parking behind the Darty Building. I know a decision be made. I'm not here to complain, I just want to know for Main Street what that looks like.
Roger can jump in if you need to, but my understanding, Jinx, is it's always, it is what it's always been, to allow public parking in both of those lots on both sides. Now typically, it's 24 hours, but it's kind of hard to monitor that in any case, because Roger was even talking earlier, you know, back in the day, you know Barney Five used to check, you know, put a mark, check mark with a piece of chalk and the courts ruled that you can't do that either. But I think, I think someone long-term, it will be addressed, but you would think a lot of those cars there, just like anywhere else, they have a job to go to, they have places to go, so it's going to be moved, probably be parked in the same place, but it's not going to be in that same spot.
Okay.
Is that about right?
And I did ask Roger about resurfacing that bottom. Is that enough to the builder or the city?
This is something we're going to do. We've talked about, I think initially, we were going to do that pavilion down there. We talked to Catherine about that, it might probably be better served somewhere else. So we're going to re-streep that, hopefully get us at least 20 more spaces. And Jinx, there's a couple of other spaces too that we're looking at throughout that area that would gain more space. The street above, escapes me, right above the old western lot over the old hamblers, we're going to be able to strip that road and behind that, under that overpass behind Alex McCrew's building back in there, there's about 30 spaces. I think we need to be more creative on some of the other streets, we can do one way and create three or four here and there. And I think our churches could play a big role too. I know my church, Memorial Methodist, I had talked to them a year or two ago about maybe having some type of agreement with the city for that back parking lot, which would probably be at least 40 spaces. And St. Mark's would be there, I think First Baptist would be interested in that. I'm really excited that, you know, Roger and I have talked about this before, I hope, I hope we do have a parking issue, because man, it's, that's going to be pretty exciting to have that much excitement and energy that going on downtown. And I think we have a pretty good plan to bring more parking spaces in there when that's needed.
Okay.
Clarification, though, part of the parking lots got tore up by the contractor. You know, what's, what got tore up there will be the responsibility of the contractor to come in and repair. Yes, that will be their responsibility, and we've already spoke to them about that. Yes.
And I had talked to Roger about that. You're doing most of the talking, so I started my three minutes.
I got you.
I've been accused of that more than once, Jinx.
One complaint, and I've heard it several times, the barrier on Main Street to the Darty Building, it's been pushed to the road now, you can't get by it. I've been about run over twice. Having to cross the street and get back, it's almost impossible. Would you see if they can move it back just a bit so traffic can walk through that?
Bonn, would you like to address that?
I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Okay. I noticed that today too, it's, it varies.
Seems to keep going.
Yeah.
Okay. And Roger, this is you, what's new on Main and Market? What can we expect as merchants and win? I know that's difficult.
Well, we got, we did get a better update at what, two weeks ago, Catherine, I think? Our tent grant, the main guy we had been dealing with had been out on an illness for about a year, but he's actually back in Nashville in his office with TDOT. Our Cannon and Cannon representatives met with him two weeks ago, and the latest scheduled update, I just made me some notes, Jinx. We're looking, hopefully by the, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, end of August, we hope to have a notice to proceed on Phase 1 and 2, which is Main, from Broad to Market, then Market Street. So we're hoping to have the notice to proceed by the end of May. We hope to be able to go to bid, or to advertise bid in June, and that we're hoping to be under contract by sometime in, hopefully around mid-August. So we actually, hopefully, to have a contractor sometime in August.
Now, please don't.
About ready to kill somebody, literally. We, they're, actually, TDOT is on a tight time schedule now too, because they're in the chance of losing some federal highway money that's been earmarked for the city. So they're not, and of course, we have been, we've had everything submitted to them several times, it's just they keep changing staff in Nashville, and it's, it just keeps messing up the review process. So right now, it's, they don't want to lose this federal highway money, so they're really pushing their staff to get our review process done. So we're literally sending emails between our engineering firm and TDOT staff, usually two, three, four times a day. So it's, we feel like it's moving pretty steadily right now.
Well, we don't want to get in the back of the line for another.
Definitely not.
And also depending on when we get the grant and we can execute it, is where we're going to, I'm just taking this from Rogers, is, you know, if it's close to Christmas time, like in August, then we'll do Main Street first, then we'll come back and do Market Street after, in January. So we'll kind of, we'll be very aware of the merchants down on Market, especially in Port of Maine.
The sidewalks are getting real bad between the church and Market.
TDOT is such a slow pace, the 2020 grant announcement that we got in January of 2020, right before COVID hit, we didn't get the contract on, that was Phase 3, which is Broad to Clinch in Main. We were awarded that grant January of 2020, we actually went to Nashville for an award ceremony. We did not get the contract until last month. So it took over four years to even get the contract. And that's just the document signed by the governor that was sent to us to be signed. So it's just, it's just crazy, the amount of time it's taken.
Well, Catherine was mad, so I brought that back to you, Roger. Catherine's doing a great job, by the way. Now, what I came to talk about, I'd be a bit controversial, I don't want that to be. I've been involved in sports in Clinton and college and minor league for a long time. We've got a softball field down here, I know the county doesn't use that or won't begin in next year, I suppose. About nine months out of the year, that park is not occupied by anybody. This town, it'd be coming to look more like me every day. And your mother, and you, Larry, and your mom and dad. That's that most valuable piece of property, property Clinton owns. And it's misused, in my opinion. Nothing would be more beautiful than a city that's got an Aspire Park now with you. Things working downtown, that needs to be changed into a park where people can walk with lights, with benches, with young married couples being able to take their kids down on the riverfront. Nothing would be more appealing to this city and to people like me to change that look and those softball fields to be more beautiful when you come into Clinton. I hate to see it unused for roughly nine months, we've got fields, but that's just a comment that I wanted to make. I wish someone would at least look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jinx. Anyone else? The busiest man in Clinton, the phone just keeps on ringing.
Yeah.
Hey, I said we had a couple of seats up here, Charlie, come up here.
Watch.
Well, there you go. State your name and address, please, Charlie.
I'm Charles Lyons. I live at 315 Orchard Avenue here up in North Clinton. And I'm very interested and I'm proud of you people about downtown. I think you probably got it all under control. I think that, like you said, it's going to be a problem with the larger parking areas. I just went by there a while ago, and I have one of the problems myself, is the dance studio. They look like it was probably 30 cars, 40 cars out there right now, where the kids are in there dancing. And that kind of fills up, but it's, it's late evening, so it don't really matter that much. And I might suggest that, that with the apartments, there'll be a lot of people parking there 24 hours a day, all night, whatever. And you might consider a parking pass that they put in the window for 24-hour parking, you know, that way they can distinguish the kids, the cars. And of course, most families have got at least two cars, if there's two of them, they've both got cars, so it increases the number. So, but I'm sure you people can handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Communications from the mayor. Have a proclamation for this nice lady in the front row. Someone come down and read it there in the podium. David, if you can bring her close to the podium, be great. Well, I made a mistake. I thought this, the proclamation, I was going to go come to the church and read it yesterday, but it wasn't yesterday, it was a week ago. Yeah, I think it was your son's fault, whether it was mine. It was just a misunderstanding, I apologize to David, I apologize to you, but I would like to read the proclamation to you at this time, if that's okay. So we, the City Council and the citizens of Clinton, Tennessee commends and recognize Ruth Fox Worthington for her dedicated life and service to the city and citizens of Clinton in Anderson County. Whereas through the passage of time, Ruth Fox Worthington has embodied the epitome of strength, kindness, and persuasiveness, inspiring generations with her unwavering spirit and enduring vitality. And whereas Ruth Fox Worthington has traversed a century filled with triumphs and challenges, embracing each moment with unwavering determination and leaving an indelible mark on the hearts and minds of all who have had the privilege of knowing her. And whereas Ruth Fox Worthington has been a pillar of her community, a trusted servant of 42 years with Anderson County Government, you should have wrote a book on that, because you probably have some good stories over 42 years, didn't you? And enriching the lives of those around her with her wisdom, compassion, and boundless generosity. And whereas Ruth Fox Worthington's life journey serves as a testament to the resilience of the human spirit and the boundless possibilities that exist within each passing year. Now therefore, be it resolved, let it be proclaimed by the City of Clinton on this, which was April 15th, 2024, in recognition of her remarkable achievements and profound impact on our lives, that Ruth Fox Worthington be honored and celebrated on the occasion of her 100th birthday. This proclamation adopted on the 15th day of April, 2024. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Thank you a lot.
Thank you. David, how old are you?
I'm 70.
How blessed you are to have your mother.
Yes.
I was thinking about that today, that's such a blessing. Thank you all for coming. Sorry it was late, but better late than never.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You went to Clinton, didn't you? I thought you could read.
Oh. What did you say? You went to Clinton, didn't you? You supposed to read. Damn. Clinton Elementary, too.
Oh, Lord.
Did I have something else for us, communication?
I don't have something.
I had something. I guess I did. Community reports, I know Kelly Johnson isn't here today, so Scott, you've got three minutes.
All right, I'll be brief. I guess first thing that I'd like to bring to your, for your approval, is the purchase of a property adjacent to North Clinton Elementary School for the price of $390,001. This is the only property available that is adjacent to North Clinton, and the Board of Ed approved it at its last meeting to bring that before you for approval of purchase. Of course, the school system's money would be used for the purchase price and customary and ordinary closing costs that are associated. So if.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman McBride, Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann, Councilman Hatmaker,
Yes.
Councilwoman Magnus,
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes.
Thank you. You also should have Budget Amendment Number 6 for $3,000 of an Anderson County Education Foundation grant and the related expenditure for that, as well as some minor adjustments for salary and benefits to one or two line items that would need your approval as well.
Hear a motion for approval for Budget Amendment Number 6?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman McBride, Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann,
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker,
Yes.
Councilwoman Magnus,
Yes.
and Mayor Burton.
Yes, Budget Amendment Number 6 passes. Thank you. That's fantastic, good job. Thank you. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Vice Mayor Gann.
Hang with me here, hopefully my voice will hold out. The Board of Zoning and Appeals had no business, the, thinking of it now, the planning commission had several items. Number one, applicant Sandbar Properties requesting final site plan removal, approval for property located at East Center Stage Business Park, property is owned M2. This is the site plan for a new Tennessee Department of Corrections facility. Everything had been met and with the addition of a fire hydrant requested by the state, all was in line, so this was approved by the planning commission. Applicant CSR Engineering is requesting final site plan review for property located at 115 Eagle Way, property is owned to M2. This is the Grand Steel Edition Site Plan, noting that all corrections have been made. They have waited for this until they knew the project would occur. So this, based upon this, considering they have now received a recorded replat, the planning commission voted to approve this also. And then third, WB Realty requesting final PUD Site Plan approval for property located at 325 West Broad Street, property is owned to R3. This is the final PUD Site Plan, all comments have been addressed, further emphasizing stormwater concerns, they've been all addressed, and it was approved by the planning commission based upon that. Also, there was a public hearing to modify subdivision regulations, Article 4, general requirements. This is the open hearing, there was no input, so as a result, nothing was done there. And then fifth, proposed amendment to modify subdivision regulations, Article 4, and minimum standards of design to delete in entirety and insert new Article 4 general requirements and minimum standards of design, adding the requirement as followed. The first 60 feet of a private access road connecting to a public street must be a hard, durable surface with either concrete, asphalt, pavers, or other approved method upon a compacted subgrade with a crown. The remainder of the private access road shall be at a minimum of gravel or shale surface, not less than four inches deep, compacted and crowned with a minimum road width of 12 feet. This was taken under consideration due to service issues for the city as far as the fire department, garbage, and other thing like this. It was felt that this was needed to be able to service those areas as it should be needed. And the planning commission approved this based upon that. Number six, proposed amendment to modify zoning code by deleting Section 2.9 signs in its entirety and inserting new Section 2.9 signs in its place. Those of you who have been around very long know that planning commission has dealt with. that planning commission has dealt with the issue of signs, size, placement, everything else. It has been a nightmare for years, and this is an attempt to, to try to clear this up. Again, this is trying to clear up some of the codes and such that we have had. And, uh, based upon that, uh, planning commission passed this motion unanimously. Any questions?
Any questions for Larry?
If I can answer.
Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Board Report, pass that for this month since Councilman McBride's not in. Any other board committee reports? I know Catherine has some. You have anything on your end?
Green Maggot is planning for June ten. That's still in the, in the plans.
Still in the works?
Yes.
Catherine?
Good evening. I just wanted to thank, um, each of you that came to the Mosaic Arts Festival, um, on April sixth. It was a great event, um, and, um, we appreciate your support and love, um, our partnership with Clinton City Schools and the city and, um, you know, all the people that came out to support us. So, um, thank you for that. Um, I wanted to let you know that, um, I don't know if you all know the Appalachian Channel, but they are a YouTube channel with hundreds of thousands of followers, and, um, they've now done three videos on the city of Clinton. Um, they came to the Mosaic Arts Festival, and then we just filmed another one last week that's live now. I can send it to you if you'd like to see it. It's about thirty minutes to an hour each episode. They're going to be coming once a month now, and we're going to be highlighting different stores and different parts of downtown, different history elements of downtown. So, um, yours truly is hosting and going around and asking people about their business and why they're here and what brought them to Clinton, all the things that make up this small-town America that seem, that seem to be of interest to a lot of viewers. So, um, it's very exciting that we have them coming and highlighting our town and, um, in a really neat way. And if you kind of go through the comments, a lot of people are really seeing Clinton for the first time, um, and I think they're seeing it with a very positive public perspective. So, um, we're really excited about this partnership with them. Um, we also have the Scout Guide will be coming out this month. We used some of the funds that the city gave us for promotional use to advertise in the Scout Guide. They print fifteen thousand copies across the state of Tennessee, um, and those are distributed. It's a beautiful ad. Um, there's lots of opportunities to talk to other people who are advertising in this magazine, so we feel like it's another really great way to, um, get Clinton out and talked about. Um, but we also, we included all the dates for downtown, so not our date, not just our dates, but all the merchants, the guild, you know, anything that's happening in downtown, that's in that magazine. So, um, I'll bring new copies hopefully next month when it comes out. Um, and then just a reminder, the Spring Antique Festival is May third and fourth. Um, we're going to have a really big event with that. We're going to have artisans on Main Street again. That will go all the way down to Broad Street. Um, so we expanded from the fall just a little bit further from that, too. Um, and I did want to say, um, in regards to the parking and, um, what Charlie and Jinx talked about, so, um, we actually met as an executive committee this morning. Main Street really wants to be helpful and be a voice and help the city to figure out all the things with that. You know, it's very exciting that downtown Clinton is growing. You know, it's no secret that we're trying to recruit food and beverage to the downtown area, and I think with all that growth, there are other Main Streets have, that have done this before, and so I think we can, you know, help and brainstorm and work through the parking of that. We did decide to table the pavilion, um, based on our conversations with the city because we didn't want to add to the parking problem, even though it's something that we really want to see in our downtown area. Um, but even when I'm at last week with, um, Chief Becker and JB about the antique festival, Chief Becker was like, Catherine, you're going to have a parking problem at some point, and we do want to get ahead of that. So hopefully, our partnerships can continue as we, um, we work out those problems. That's it for me.
Any questions for Catherine?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, we will have that on Dropbox by no later than next Tuesday. Uh, Chris and I and department heads have been working on it probably for the, well, Chris started in January. As I told you last month, I got involved February. We've met with department heads a couple of times. Uh, took a pretty big hit when we got the, um, statement from the comptroller on the equalization on our, um, um...
Personal property.
Personal property. Uh, that hurt us a little bit, so we had to go back to the drawing board and make some adjustments. But I think Chris and I balanced the budget with about seven hundred and sixteen dollars left last week, so we do have a balanced budget, uh, some pretty good things in it. So we'll present that on Dropbox next week and also with some of a cover page explaining any of the changes that we've made, and that will be for first reading at the May meeting. So we'll get that out next week. Um, TAP grant, I've already gave those updates. Uh, general government, in accordance with the provisions of Ordinance six eighty-seven establishing the position of administrative hearing officer, the officer is to, is to be recommended by the city manager and approved by city council for a four-year term. Since we are not yet ready to appoint a permanent administrative hearing officer, we need to appoint a temporary officer to serve as an interim basis. I therefore recommend authorization upon passage of Ordinance six eighty-seven on a second reading to appoint an interim administrative hearing officer in accordance with the requirements of the ordinance. The interim administrative hearing officer will serve until the time the permanent one is appointed and approved by city council. The funding for this position is included in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Hugh Ward, who is the current administrative hearing officer for the city of Oak Ridge and has been for several years, Matt and I have met with him, and he has agreed since he's experienced to be our interim, uh, because we really, on second passage now, if it passes, we really need to go ahead and be prepared to have our first administrative hearing probably within the next four to six weeks. Um, our thought process, so as since he's experienced, he would be the one to kind of get us started off. Uh, we have talked to and, and have some people in mind for the permanent one, but there, it would not be feasible to get them right away, so, so Hugh would be the person we'd like to go ahead and, and put on as an interim basis for three or four months.
Do we need to wait until we pass this, or is this going to be a contingent upon?
I think we pass it, contingents of the ordinance passing.
Your, your motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor.
Hey, Roger, before you move on, I, I was looking at the general information, the office is going to be closed on May twenty-seventh. Have...
Good Friday.
Have...
Mine has Good Friday, that's why I didn't read.
Oh, okay. Well, it's the twenty-seventh. Have we, have we rescheduled our meeting?
Yeah.
We, we did that last time.
Yeah, twenty-eighth.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure.
One more of that.
I'm getting old, guys.
Uh, finance defer to Chris.
All right, thank you, Roger. Uh, quickly on the, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I've been going over to get new numbers almost weekly from the property appraisers' office, so we'll still have a balanced budget. That, that, um, surplus may change a little bit, so just wanted to update you guys that, that personal property equalization has really hurt us, um, in, in revenue. Uh, so we're, we're looking for ways to, to make sure that we're maximizing the other revenues without, you know, we, we always want to present you with a conservative but realistic budget. So those numbers will change a little bit, but you'll have a balanced budget. So looking at the monthly report, we're three-fourths of the way through the fiscal year already, hard to believe. Um, so we've collected eighty-five percent of our revenues, which is, which is good, it's strong. Uh, you'll see the, the expenditures, we spent ninety-eight percent of those, but keep in mind, we've done a whole lot of capital outlay this year. So that number is not necessarily, um, indicative to what our normal operating percentage is, has spent. Um, uh, in regards to the local option sales tax, it was a strong month again. Wasn't quite, uh, from two months prior, but it was a very strong month. It was almost fourteen percent over the same month last year. So we're looking good still on that. So we're, we're cautiously optimistic that that will hold true. Um, you know, as we, as we grow and, uh, see more traffic and more business, uh, that number will go up. And of course, it, you know, brings its own issues, but, uh, you know, as far as revenue goes, it, it's been strong. So I can answer any questions that you've got.
Any questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, the police department has two two thousand and eleven Chevy Tahoe utility vehicles, which are no longer serviceable for the police depart, police duty. Due to the high mileage and excessive repair costs, we would therefore request authorization to declare these vehicles as surplus and advertise them for sale on GovDeals website.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Good deal. Thank you, Mayor. Only other thing I got, would like to defer to JB. He's got a couple of events coming up. If he'd like to tell about them, and also, I know the mayor and I discussed it, about pickleball that, uh, he has finished at Lakefront. He can tell a little bit about that.
Thanks, Chief. Um, events by Saturday, nine to twelve, I think, is all summer's walk at Lakefront. Uh, most everything's in the park. The, the walk they have is, a lot of it is in the park, but they do have a stretch. They're going down Riverside to Hailom, I think, and back. So they'll have some stuff down there. Uh, the other is the Pet Expo. We started about three years ago, I think, three or four years ago. Um, it's, it's growing. I think there's almost seventy vendors. Um, so it'll be all day, or well, it's ten to three. Um, everything will be set up early in the morning and then basically events ten to three, but bring your dog, come out. They got food trucks. Uh, it, it's been pretty happy.
What's the date on that, JB?
Saturday, twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, this Saturday.
Tennis scores turned out good. Uh, we've had a bunch of thousands of pickleballers coming down there already. Um, so...
More than tennis players, I'll say that.
Uh, I think the schools are probably happy we got them done, so they can get down there and practice a little bit, but, uh, the other end of town will be, they're going to come back, I think, next week when season gets kind of over and finish up and do JC. So we'll have them done shortly.
Any discussion about maybe having a league for pickleball?
Had a call the other night about it, so we can't.
I think it'd be good. Got a senior league?
I'll have to get a nice machine hooked up down there.
One piece of sound. That really does look good, JB. Thank you.
All I have, Mayor.
Okay. Under ordinances and resolutions, uh, first reading of Ordinance Number Six eighty-nine, this is amending Ordinance Number Six eighty, zoning ordinance modifying chapter two, section two point nine in regards to signs. Matt, you mind speaking on, on behalf of that?
Sure. So this is a... A pretty much not a rewrite, but several changes, um, updates, uh, I would call them modifications that was primarily driven by the requests by Spire to have, um, signed specific regulations for the P one zone that did not exist. And through that process, uh, there were some identified areas that we could improve on. And so in the twenty-one page document you have with, uh, with also some crossouts, there are other suggested changes along with the P one zone, uh, admit, addition. So there's other changes along that calls out specific issues with graffiti for code enforcement, obviously, uh, as well as, uh, more specify, specifying, uh, more clearly what feather banners were as a relation to prohibited signs and, and a, and a path forward as to when they can be used. And there's, uh, several definitions that were added, and essentially, there was just a clarification of, it, it threw out whenever days were referenced, whether it was business or calendar days, uh, it was always a debating point. Are we talking business or calendar? So it spells it out in locations throughout the ordinance that calendar day is, is the prevailing timeframe. Makes a big difference for codes. So those are, uh, essentially where we're at, and, um, I'm open for questions.
Any questions for Matt? Your motion for approval, Ordinance Number Six eighty-nine?
Motion. Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman McBride, Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilwoman Magnus.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, Ordinance Number Six eighty-nine passes on the first of two readings. Um, we've discussed, we had a request from the, the Spire group, um, to, because we're kind of waiting on this, the second reading on this, to be able to put the sign up, and they're getting ready to get some things going. So, um, Roger and I looked at, you have to advertise like two weeks out. So I think we're looking at either May sixth, sixth, seventh, or eighth. Um, so is, is, and I was just, is the sixth okay? Is that, I mean, we only really need four people here. I mean, is, is this going to be... What, what time of the day were we thinking about doing, like one o'clock?
That's fine, if we can...
One o'clock on the sixth. That's going to work for you guys. Be all right? If you can make it, you can, but we'll make sure we have four on there. Can I go ahead and make, go ahead and get past that and make a, have a motion on that?
It would need to be a public hearing and, and meeting.
Mm-hmm, correct. Your motion for a public hearing and meeting on May the sixth at one PM here at City Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Second and final readings, Ordinance Number Six eighty-seven. This is amending the CMC Title Three Municipal Court, adding chapter five for the administrative hearing officer. Matt, you want to go ahead and talk about that?
Sure. This is, uh, as Roger was speaking about earlier, and, um, this is for the administrative hearing officer that will hear property maintenance and zoning and, um, other stormwater and environmental code violations as they're identified. This is not a municipal court. This is clearly an administrative court, if you will, and, uh, they will be levying fines to, to identified violators in excess of fifty dollars, uh, that currently limits our city, city court today. So I'm open for questions.
Any questions for Matt? Your motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman McBride, Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilwoman Magnus.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, Ordinance Number Six eighty-seven passes on second and final reading. Ordinance Number Six eighty-eight, rezoning B two to P one, Aspire Park, Yarnell Road at Clinch Avenue. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman McBride, Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilwoman Magnus.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, Ordinance Number Six eighty-eight passes on second and final reading. Any old business before us? Any new, new business? I do want to say, I know you're on the back to recovery. I hope you continue and get stronger every day.
Hopefully so.
Prayers are with you. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Means adjourn.
And there's, uh, several definitions that were added. And there's, uh, several definitions that were added.
Councilman Harold.
Yes.